Good evening, everyone. This is the Wellington Board of Education on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We are calling this meeting in order at seven oh seven P M. We will begin this evening by participating in the Athletic Legion Evening Buildups. We're gonna go ahead and hear from our most important contributors here, our student representatives.
Yeah.
Looks like we have before.
I need to. I would just like to say to the board, and I'd like to do it in this spot because I'd like the student representatives to be here.
Okay.
I learned that it's a good thing for kids to understand that adults are sometimes wrong and needs to help them with things. So that's why I wanted to do this now, if it's okay with you.
Okay.
So just to the board, on the March twenty-first Board of Finance meeting, I spoke on the second president's speech, and mistakenly referred to this as I was speaking, it was a bit impassioned. That was during our talks about getting our approval for our budget. During the talks, I referred to the board as my board, and then quickly changed it to our board. We, the context was, why should my board be punished for forethought of a facilities manager? And they quickly shifted to our board. I just want to clarify to everybody here, that was no way a declaration of leadership or ownership or anything of those, anything of that sort. It was simply just a reflection of the board that I was on. It was, but it was the wrong thing to say. So I just want to apologize to everybody. It's not, it's our board. I just want to make that clear.
Like, anyone can forgive us. Did you all, did you guys hear what Mr. questions had said?
Mm-hmm.
He said something about wanting to be a team member, right? And sometimes when you're on a team, you get kind of, you know, excited about things and might speak for ourselves, but really, we're a team. We're a group. We work together. You know what that's like? You work in groups and teams all the time at school and other places, right?
I do.
So that's, that's an important thing for kids and grownups and even animals in a colony or a pack, right? To remember each other. Yeah. Thank you for that. Okay, so who do we have over there? Is it Elijah and Edgar?
It is.
Hi, guys. How you been?
Good.
Good. I see that you're ready. You're going solo with no principal tonight. Wow.
What I told, this is coaching. Stay home.
They've got this, right?
You guys are pros.
All right, take it away.
On March thirteenth, Dr. Conley taught students about the stages of matter and showed them how to make their own ice cream using salt, half and half, vanilla and ice. The best part was getting to eat their vanilla ice cream at the end.
On March twenty-seventh, it was Spirit Day. It was first grade's turn to vote on the theme. They picked beach day. Students in staff dressed in summer hats, flower necklaces, and sarongs. One kindergarten even made their own camera out of a cardboard box. On March twenty-eighth, second graders went on a field trip to the Connecticut Science Centers. Students visit a, visited a variety of exhibits and had a fantastic time. On April third, the New England Science and Sailing Foundation in Stoughton came to Center School to do some activities. Second graders learned about ocean currents and their impact on trash and ocean animals, the differences between freshwater and saltwater environments, the water cycle, and how to conserve water. Third graders learned about animal adaptations, looked at a weird, weird and wild jars of rock shrimp, lobsters and fish, examined shells and starfish, walrus tooth, shark jaws, and beaver and otter pouches. They used clothespins and beads to simulate be, uh, bird beaks, used a strainer and collard to dye and stimulate hummingbird food, and have the opportunity to hold animals from a local rental pool, including dragonfly larva, minnows, snails, and crabs.
I saw, excited.
The reptile, the reptile, the reptile, the reptile came today and brought a bunch of animals. Baseballers, kindergartners, and first graders had an assembly and got and gotten up close encounter with snakes, toads, Argentita, tado, and a beauty dragon. Fourth graders learned about animal ecosystem and their importance. We also learned about native and invasive reptile species and how human behavior impacts reptile and amphibian systems.
I walked into the gym today, and there was a six-foot reptile Columbia boa, and then, right? Yes, that was out.
My teacher kept saying snakes.
Yeah.
And the person there kept on trying to convince her to pet this long fat snake.
What do you do with that? That was a big snake.
And eventually, he finally made her hold it.
Okay, all right.
Did you guys pet the snake? Did you guys pet the snake?
Yeah, we got to pet some of the reptiles, but not all of them.
Yeah, some of them are just small, and some of them can hurt us and that poisonous ones.
Yeah.
Not venomous, but.
Yeah, we used to have a five-and-a-half football.
Wow, that's a pretty every day.
Fourth graders will have an in, uh, this is upcoming event, so you should probably mention that. Fourth graders will have an in-house presentation on building better bridges at the West Hartford Children's Museum in early May. They will also have a field trip next month, but the details are still being finalized. Third graders will have a field trip to the Soars Adventure Park on April twenty-fifth. The trip ties their year-long focus on integrity and upcoming unit on the human body. Our author Grace Lynn will visit Center School on May twenty-second for three separate grade-level presentations. Grace Lynn is a Taiwanese-American children's writer and Miss Raider. On May thirtieth, the Connecticut Science Center will do a presentation in the gym called Suds on trouble for pre-k through fourth grade. Fourth graders will fly up to Hall School in June. Center School will have an art show at the end of May. The band concert and music festival will be in June.
The third grade field trip to the Soars Adventure Park, they've been, their theme has been integrity all year long. If you walked into any of their classrooms, those, they can give you so many examples of integrity. And they just say, they will say to each other, it's fantastic. It's very interesting.
Things we need to work on: being quiet on the bus and listening to our bus drivers, using indoor voices inside, safety patrol members following the rules to walk, and being a good sport when playing soccer during recess.
Same to all of those guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions for our two guys here?
You have any questions for us?
Oh, no.
No.
You both want to stay and watch this, and the middle school crew's not here tonight because they did something different. They used the TV studio at Hall School to film theirs because they were not going to be able to be here tonight. So if you want to stay and watch this, go in and sit.
Yeah.
Okay. Found, I did something special. Wasn't that, give me one second. Wait, share. And ooh, I didn't think I was going to have to do this. I thought I was just going to play. What am I supposed to do? That's not going to work. They put so much time and effort into this, too.
Do you want to pop ahead to Carrie and then come back?
Sure, that's if you'd like to go.
I need to be on the spot right now, trying to figure out.
If you want, oh, 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 no, no, I just did it. There it is. I knew it was there. Sorry, Carrie, hold on, hold tight.
Good evening, Board of Education members. We wanted to start off with letting you know about the upcoming season for softball and baseball teams. The HMS softball team has a scrimmage tomorrow against Mansfield, and their first game will be the week after April break. The boys also have a scrimmage tomorrow in Mansfield. Their first game is Tuesday, April twenty-third.
We had an educational theater event on Tuesday, March nineteenth. Two people came and did skits to show the negative impacts of drink, that drinking has on you and your relationships. They also did skits on the effects of drugs, vaping, and many other harmful things. Many students seemed to enjoy the entertaining skits, and it appeared to help more students become aware of the topic.
An issue our team came up with is not having feminine products available in the girls' bathrooms. To fix this, we have feminine product dispensers that are going to be installed in the near future. The ones that are provided right now are outdated, broken, empty, and need coins. The new dispensers will be free and easily accessible to students in need of these products.
Though we addressed this last time, we still believe that racism is a huge problem in our school. We have put in some precautions, like alerting teachers about slang words for these racist terms, and stricter punishments if caught. We also will be having a guest speaker comment in some time in the near future to talk about racism and its influence on people. If you have any solutions or ideas, please let us know because it is still a very big problem in our school.
This Friday was a spring fling for seventh and eighth graders. This event was hosted by the Student Council Representatives, Juliana Viveros, Isla Lord, Erin Lehane, Leanna Kelly, Cadence Coombs, and Mackenzie Cypher. Everyone had a blast with the awesome music and dancing. Here are some pictures and videos.
Yeah, let's avoid the chat room here. Sorry, I'm going to get them on fire.
On March twenty-seventh, our fantastic art teacher, Mrs. Angel, as well as our band and course directors, Mr. Sonnenberg and Mr. Cannon, put together a wonderful evening of the arts. Students' art was featured throughout the lobby, and the school chamber singers, jazz band, seventh and eighth grade band and chor, and both choruses, displayed their musical talents. Great job to all who were featured.
Different way to do the, uh, the share. Pretty good. Pretty neat, huh? So you get to look forward to it. Either that or you can write a grant for to get a TV studio of that Center School.
Okay.
You can talk to Mrs. Cushion about that one.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Well, you don't have to stay if you don't like it.
Thank you very much. I love you.
Thank you very much.
Anything's happening. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, dancing with Carrie and the PTA report. Hit it, girl.
Hello, hello. Um, just a few PTA updates here. Um, we just finished up our very first Read-A-Thon. It was a great success. Thank you so much to everybody who participated. My favorite part personally was watching the kids hang up their leaves on the Read-A-Thon tree. I loved going by and just looking at all the books that the kiddos were reading. Um, we made a total profit of one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that is going towards brand-new headphones for all Center and Hall Memorial students. Um, so they will be getting all brand-new headphones. Um, let's see what else. So we have some upcoming events, and that will include Staff Appreciation Week, which is May sixth through tenth. Um, we are looking for baked goods and candy donations. If anybody is interested, let us know. Staff absolutely love their candy and their baked goods. That is the one thing that they are always requesting. Um, so we'd like to give that to them. Um, we also have our Wellington Five K and Silent Auction, May twenty-fifth. We're very, very, very excited about this event and have been working hard behind the scenes, um, gathering some amazing silent auction items. I'm going to give you guys a little, you know, a little teaser of what we have. Um, just a few items so far. We have a signed basketball from our amazing UConn players. They did such an amazing job in March Madness. Um, so, yeah, that was actually your idea, Phil, so thanks for that idea. Um, we have some Wolf Pack tickets, Yard Goat tickets, Rhode Island F C tickets, Lake Compounds tickets, Sunny's Place, and so, so much more. Um, so we're very much looking forward to that silent auction event. Um, if you own a business, or if you know anybody around locally that owns a business and would be interested in donating any items, gift certificates, goods or services to this silent auction, please let us know. That would be awesome. Um, we participated in a concession stand for the Evening of the Arts um, last month, and we were able to donate over a hundred dollars to the band Big East trip. So thank you guys so, so much for visiting us at the concession stands table. That was a great event. Um, our next PTA meeting is this Thursday, April eleventh at six P M, located at Center School in the library. We hope to see you there. Um, if not, we do have a Zoom link, which was posted in our PTA Facebook group. It was also sent via email to all of our PTA members. If you can't locate it and you would like to attend virtually, let us know, and we will get that link over to you. Our email is membership.willingtonpta@gmail.com, and that is all for now. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for everything you're doing. Busy. How everyone's been busy. It's wonderful. Okay, um, agenda item five is President to Speak. If you are interested in sharing your thoughts, ideas, and questions, you can virtually raise your hand, and, um, we will find you that way. Um, we don't have anybody in the room, so James may begin.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Excellent. Uh, James Marshall, Fisher Hill Road. I just wanted to start out by saying, um, you know, with a note of appreciation for the diligent work Q A and M presented before this meeting. It's not an easy task, but the presentation, I think, was very clarifying generally. So thank them. Uh, but aside from that, I just want to make a comment related to that, that none of those, and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe any of those values really captured, um, you know, swing space for students or costs associated with avoiding disruption during what is, and these projects as package are major renovation projects. They're not happening, or being completed in the summer in all likelihood. So, um, the cost and impact to education should remain a priority, um, while any construction activities in these schools are under, are being undertaken. Um, so as you really start to analyze and assess, you know, how to implement this stuff, um, please put that at the forefront of your considerations and the potential impact to project costs associated with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. We will have another opportunity for President to Speak at the bottom. All right. Um, item six is the Chair Report. Cape stands for the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. I just wanted to make sure everyone here is receiving emails from.
A lot of them.
Yeah, right. I am looking at a lot of them. I haven't had a chance to take advantage of, um, a lot of what they offer, but as you said, they offer quite a bit. Um, I saw something quickly that they are doing a survey, just asking questions of board members, trying to get a feel for things. And we do love a good survey, don't we? So, um, they were offering a raffle for those people who participated too. Um, it is due on April fifteenth, so if you want to answer some of their questions and maybe give them a little bit of feedback, um, that might be nice to have a voice from our particular group. Um, and then I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the meetings that are coming up regarding our budget situation. I know that's on our agenda later. I'm sure Phil will touch on those. But on, um, Thursday, the tenth, the Board of Education is having a proposed expenditures and revenue for, for everyone. It's a public hearing.
Tomorrow night.
Oh, tomorrow night, sorry, Wednesday. And that's how, is that here?
Hold on.
Hold down. All right, thank you. Okay. Um, so that was pretty important because they're going to go through all of the different budgets.
Board of Finance.
Board of Finance, yeah.
In person only, correct?
Yes, right. Thank you for all those details. We know, we know what we're doing. Okay, back. Um, and then, correct me if necessary, Tuesday, the twenty-third is our annual town meeting.
Next day, Wednesday. They moved it for us because of the timing. Typically, the town, typically the budget here would have been tonight, but we had a regular meeting, and I said, if you want someone there, you need to move it. So they've adjusted everything out today for us.
And so the referendum will be held on?
And the referendum is Tuesday, May seventh.
Oh, good. I had that one.
Yes.
What night is the town meeting?
All are Wednesdays. So budget hearing Wednesday, April tenth, and annual town meeting Wednesday, April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thank you. April tenth.
Yes, and I appreciate them making that adjustment because.
Thank you, Board of Finance.
We still have business to do.
Okay, April tenth, public hearing is all town hall only, person only. April twenty-fourth, annual town meeting, and May seventh, referendum.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Those are all pretty important. I hope that our public will show up and participate as much as possible. There is no such thing as a silly question at this point. Just, please be informed. Okay, item seven is communications. Item.
So I think you had two communications. They were both from Rick Maloney. Uh, it was C I P stuff as well, and it was about bonding. Um, one was March nineteenth, one was March twenty-seventh. You should have gotten both of those in there. If you did not, I'm glad to forward to, but I believe he ceded all of them.
I don't know.
It cuts.
Okay, um, item seven, Superintendent Report. Oh, eight, apologize.
Yes, so, um, staffing. So we have two staffing changes. We had a pair opening. We hired Michelle White, um, as a paraprofessional for Hall School. Um, she was replacing Natasha Chandler. Uh, and then we just received, um, a letter of resignation for Haley Collins. She's finishing, almost finishing her first year as a special education teacher at Center. She's actually leaving to go do her master's full-time. Um, and so we just learned that this week, so she'll be leaving at the end of May. Uh, I have an interview with a candidate, uh, tomorrow, um, already, and there might be just a quick turnaround. We'll find out. So we'll see. Um, but we wish her luck. I think she's going back for occupational therapy. Uh, and I understand the wanting to do it all in one shot because over a longer time, it takes a long time. Uh, the town budget update, um, we just mentioned the, the dates. The, the Board of Finance did appropriate what you had requested, so nine million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. That was for the, the budget. I am basically just going to utilize the budget snapshot page that's in your budget document. That's what I'm going to share tomorrow. Uh, there's been a lot of movement. I don't want to highlight one thing or the other, but I think we all know what the driver of this budget is. Um, and, uh, that's on the snapshot. So that'll be there. Is it the old town hall? Um, and you never know if it's going to be sixty degrees in there or eighty-five, so dress the layers. Um, the other piece about that is just know that afterwards, depending on your action tonight, um, the Board of Finance will be holding a regular meeting after the budget hearing. And one of the items on their regular meeting will be to discuss, um, calling a town meeting if you request that tonight, or maintenance items that you've already been approved. So don't think it's, uh, budget hearing and walk away. Um, I think it's important, and you'll learn more about that further down the agenda tonight. Um, we've had one COVID case since the last meeting. I hope it's going away. The nurses will say the stomach bug and strep throat has taken over in place of it. Um, but, uh, one COVID case, I don't know if it's because we're not testing. I have no idea. Uh, this is not something I normally report on CES power outage. Um, we had a power outage on March twenty-first. It was, there was two potential areas of why it happened. Um, and it was a brownout, which was, uh, an issue for us. So basically, what happens is half the building had power, and they were like, oh, we're going to be okay, but half the power in the building wreaks havoc on electronics. And we lost some things. Um, so the boiler went down. Um, we didn't realize until afterwards that we did not have heat and cook some of the electronics on the boiler. Um, we had, um, an issue with, which was the circulator pumps. Um, we had an issue with the internet bridge, which gives my office internet, and I've had really amazing internet the last, um, since. Uh, I think it was finally fixed on Friday. It took about eight hours. They had to replace some parts to actually get us internet back here. Um, so I'm glad that happened. Um, and then the burglar alarm was impacted. Anything that was electronics, I wish we could have just turned power off entirely. It would have saved the electronics in place. Or if you have a whole-school generator, you would have been protected, and you would never even have known. Um, so it's one of those quirky things that happens, but when I heard half the building had power, uh, and they did not have any power here, I knew that was not a good situation. So it didn't cost us a fortune, but it cost us some money to fix those things, unfortunately. Here's the other one, uh, the HMS water incident, we're calling it, uh, on Easter.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yes, uh, I got a call on Easter morning, um, from Alex Moore, the fire chief. Uh, and basically what happened, Connecticut Water had an issue with water pressure. Uh, that's who feeds Hall School, the water in Hall School. Um, the condos on Depot Road, Firehouse, High Chase, and Hall School were impacted. So Steve Felino maintenance at HMS, Alex and I went to Hall School. Um, we found several bathrooms in the boiler room sections flooded. When I say flooded, I'm not talking about flooded like we've had with the boil, with the, um, univentilators. It wasn't like that. It was water on the floor, not horrendous, just a pain. Let's just be honest. It was a pain. Uh, we spent a couple of hours turning off each individual spot where it was leaking. Um, and we cleaned up all the water, and, uh, when we left, Connecticut Water was at basically the driveway, and they were installing, um, basically, hopefully, they, they installed, um, I'm forgetting the name of this, and I wrote this in there. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the name, a, a pressure relief valve, so that if they have, the pressure goes up again, it's not going to push out crazy pressure into our toilets and flood our bathrooms. Um, so thankfully, Steve was able to go back in on Monday, replace the toilet parts that were impacted. He had them in stock, low cost, just again, one of those things that was annoying. So, um, we were thankful we were at High Chase because their sprinklers went off again. So, um, again, just one of those issues that, I don't know why these happen on Christmas or Easter. It's just the way it happens. When I saw Alex Moore calling, I was like, here we go. I don't know why these happen on Christmas or Easter. It's just the way it happens. When I saw Alex Moore calling, I was like, here we go. So that happened, so that's done. Uh the eclipse uh was a big conversation across school districts. Um obviously, yesterday, and I I think it's important that you hear my decision-making on this. And I I really would like to write a letter, and I'm not going to, but write a letter to some of the news crews that put out blanket statements that say. Schools across Connecticut are closing, dismissing early, um because schools was two districts, two districts, um dismissed early. Nobody in our area dismissed early, and so I just can't stand with these things like that because it looks like we're not responding, and we were. There's lots of communication that went out. We bought um students and staff classes. Um and it turned out to be amazing, actually. The middle school, it was a little early in the the eclipse. So they got, when they got to go out for their their bosses, they were out there early. They were putting their glasses on, checking out, and then all their bosses off. They went. Um the elementary school, we had a lot of kids get picked up early. I think they were going to watch parties, obviously, um in certain places. Um but all the rest of the kids came outside with their glasses on. They didn't have time to add to the report. I'm sure the pictures will be in their next report. The like wow faces with their glasses on, it was incredible. Um this bald guy got really cold. It dropped about ten degrees outside. It's out there, pictures, it was um. But just overall, the stress of, you know, what, you know, we've lived through this before. It's, we can do this. Our students listen to our staff very well. The kids did outstanding job. Um the bus drivers came out, and we gave them glasses to take a peek at it real quick. It it went very, very well. So um we did supply the glasses. It cost us some money, but just when you see the pictures, well worth every dollar. To allow our kids to experience it and and not just say, don't look up, don't look up, don't look up. So uh eclipse of April eight. Uh they mentioned the upcoming events. There are some things that they did not mention. Uh next week was April vacation. Uh and we are kind of co-sponsoring through our after-school grant. We're supporting some students attending uh the after-school. Um it's the uh the the red camp. We gave some scholarships through our after-school grant, which we couldn't apply this year. So we were allowed to use some of our funding for that, so we have, I think there's twenty-plus kids going, which is great. Um and we have the hidden in plain site, which is um basically working to hide substances. Things in your bedroom um coming. That's co-sponsored with uh Human Services. That will be April thirtieth at six P M. I will tell you, if you are a parent, uh this is an outstanding presentation. It is alarming, the number of amazing spots. Uh people hide things. Um and so they will share all those things, and it's not a kid-friendly evening. It's for parents.
Where is it?
Um I believe it's at Hall School. Um and then we have our pre-K and kindergarten screening coming up the first two weeks of May. That'll be going on, so so um. I'll give you more information at your in your May meeting. The other, I have three things. Uh the evening of the arts, if you didn't get a chance, there were several of you there. It was, I thought it was amazing. Uh we purchased four pieces of artwork for students. Their faces, when I offered them money for their artwork, was incredible. They were all black and white. I'm not sure what that says about me this year.
Offered them money? I wonder whether that Bruins picture really does.
The Bruins one?
Yeah.
Um I can make an offer for you if you'd like. I can pass that along, so I went and talked to those students and just say, would you be willing to sell their your artwork? I contacted their families. Um they all said absolutely yes to give me money for your artwork. We'll frame it and we'll actually hang it in the conference room. The next set will go in the conference room. There's no student artwork in there at this time, so. Um there's that, but it was, it was just a, I thought, a great night. The collaboration coordination right now in the unified arts, um and this one, what happened to be at Hall School. Between um that night was art and and music department, just fantastic. We had other staff members that were just brought the kids to 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 watch, just some great stuff and some great performances and some great um artwork, honestly. The um cellphone survey, we we put out a cellphone survey as part of a policy group. Um I think we had a hundred and sixty-five responses from families, huge, huge response. Um and we got like forty responses from staff and teachers. So the policy group will be meeting, the survey's closed now. Um so I'll be bringing that data back to the policy group and we'll share um kind of how, what the impact could be on a policy. And kind of moving forward, if there's any recommendations or changes, but I wanted to say thank you to the folks that completed the 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 survey. Um I do think sending out text messages, uh people, when I send a phone messenger, don't always respond very well. When I send a text message with a link in it. We get feedback, um and so we're gonna try and use that a little bit more without going overboard, so people don't respond, if that makes sense. Um and the last thing, the they talked tonight about all those enrichment activities. Those are part of the ARPA enrichment activity funds that we're down to like a thousand bucks left, and it's gonna be applied to the author that's coming in that they've mentioned. Um but the level of engagement for the students uh coming into these events was huge. I stopped at Hall School the last couple of days. Um and the programming they were doing, it 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 was just incredible, so um kudos to those folks for for doing that. Um and for ARPA Commission for approving that. We're gonna spend every dollar, every recess dollar. It's 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 good. So those are my things for my superintendent report.
Great. A good natured classroom was out Hall today.
They were, that's new.
Be looking forward to that. Next, student representative report.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine is our financial report. We're starting with the one for this month here.
Yes, so um I'm just gonna be really blunt. This is probably the hardest financial report that I've had to pull together with Donna, because we've had so much movement trying to track transfers and things. And new grants we've applied to get the offset for special education. Um there's gonna be more movement in this ironically, between all of the transfers I'm gonna recommend tonight. And all the things we've already applied with grants or things that are coming for after-school grants, the dollar amount is actually pretty close to what I believe. Where we are. Uh I think it's right around one thirty, um which is amazing. Um that is if everything goes as planned, okay? Um I got the phone call today again for something special education related that was twenty-five thousand dollars more. I've already factored that into this. So what you don't see here is that um new outplacements are not in this number. So you can subtract seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars. However, the other funds coming in from grants and things and transfers. And I'm gonna request you make tonight brings that number back to around one thirty-five, okay? So if you look at the overall thing, and if you were comparing month to month, we got our flood insurance checked back. That was some money. So some of these accounts went up, and it's because we're offsetting through grants and things like that. Um we encumbered funds for tree work uh at Hall School and poor repairs. If you didn't know, one of those windstorms, we had a tree fall on the softball field, hit the fence. It landed perfectly, it hit, a section did hit the fence, but a very large tree landed straight between the fence and the bench. And the other fence, like where you walk into the dugout. It could have just absolutely destroyed all of our fencing, and it didn't. Um we brought in the tree service that the town uses, and we lended tree, uh and we spent a lot of money. Removing overhanging limbs, dumping things back there, trying to open it up, um just to provide some added security in there. I think long-term, uh but I I think you're talking about fifty grand, I'm gonna be honest with you, of tree work. To really clear that space and make it so that we don't have these monstrous pines uh hanging over our softball fields. Thank goodness, we were not in the fields, all I'm gonna say, because that's um a fear you always have when you have trees along your your space. It's beautiful, um however, it's it's a safety thing. So um we did, that was one of those things, you know, you talk about safety, security. I made that decision. You don't have a lot of money in your budget. This is something you have to do. Once we saw that tree come down, they took care of that. And then Public Works came in and did a lot of trimming for us afterwards as well. They dropped some trees along the parking lot for us, so thanks to them as well, because that's um. You know, we don't get a bill from Public Works when they do that. That's the collaboration we have. Um special ed, we did reclass. A a lot of money reclass means like it was applied to this budget. And now we took a grant and applied that grant money back to the budget, so when we say reclass, that's what it means. Um we updated the bus contract. That number was a little bit higher last time. We think this is pretty close to where we'll be. It'll come up and down from four thousand, depending on what region nineteen owes us. Um minor changes for supplies in the program five. We did reclass um some some funding from uh program six to the title grant. Again, it means that we had title funds we could apply to special, uh to professional development instead of using budget funds. It allows us to bring some money back into the budget. Minor change in utilities. Um the was, there was a minor, uh an updated encumbrance for cyber insurance. It was higher last time. We closed the retainer, uh the fund, the encumbrance we had for the retainer. We put some money into the retainer and then closed the encumbrance. So some money came back in because we did not use the full amount. Um I not, I would hope it just continued that way for the rest of the year, but. Felt like it was safe because of what we have in the balance in the retainer, and then we updated the insurance encumbrance for for current staff. One of the things, if you compare that number to the last budget, it was lower. Um typically, Donna doesn't update the insurance. On a regular basis. We just wait till there's, you know, the movement's done. This year, I really did push, um and she really came through, Tish double-checked it for us. Because the numbers they were reporting out that we could transfer out into special ed did not match what I was seeing in the balance, and that made me uncomfortable. They checked it. The number that we see in now, there now matches our staff. Again, who takes insurance or who waived insurance? Um and so this is why you can, I'm gonna recommend you move another big chunk of money out of that account into um special ed tonight. Can I just keep cranking?
Yes.
Go right in. So the next item on there is the program three um budget update transfers. That's this. Okay, so I'm gonna propose you make the the phone transfers. Um and really, this is just to start to balance out. We've been doing some of this along, but it's not come through transfers. Just to balance out that shortfall that's in special education. You're gonna have to do it at some point because you can't leave a program with negative. Um and this is again to to balance all of the outplacements we've had. Um we have, I I got a report from the state. We have, we're short excess costs because of their poor budgeting. Say that, their poor budgeting. We're short a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars, that's what we are losing out on this year. An excess cost grant, that if they were following the law at ninety-one percent, that's what we'd be getting. Sounds like a lot of money, but I'll tell you, there are over, uh I think there were uh ten, over ten towns that were losing over. Some were in the two and three hundred dollar range.
How is this illegal? I don't understand that.
I don't know, because we could never do that. So I, you know, the, I I've sent my piece now to the um. The head of the educational committee. I've said my piece now to Jeff Gordon, um Tamee Nuchio's, and no, uh they know. Uh I I don't know why. If they had additional ARPA money, ARBESR money, if they had something, it seems to me they should just figure this out. Uh I guess they can, because it is millions, millions, millions. They are short. I think it's to the two and fifty million, something around that ballpark. Um it just hurts us because we went from two to seven, and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in a budget like this is a lot of money. So um no, sorry, I I wrote in my notes, nineteen school districts lost over a million dollars. Nineteen, that's huge. Um so what I'm proposing here is that you transfer a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars into program three. Um special education. I cannot do this without your vote, um and this is how I believe you should read the motion, is do motion number one. Read that and then simply say thirteen thousand dol, thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars for program one to program three. You do not have to say what it is. I was just giving you that information so you knew what was wrong. Um and then just go down the list, and then you could stop there. And then we can get to uh the second motion, if that works for you guys.
Alright, so that being said, um I already went ahead and added both the program two and both program nine amounts for the sake of time. So if everybody's okay with that, um I can make the motion that we transfer a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars. Into program three, special education from the following programs, thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars from program one. Uh total of thirty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars from program two. The total of sixteen thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars from program nine and eighty thousand dollars from.
Second. Any necessary discussion? Alright, our favor, please say aye. Okay, motion yes, yes.
Okay, so that, we'll move that in. It'll bring that that negative balance down again, and then the second part of that motion is. Because you would apply your non-lapsing fund to the chimney, you need to unencumber all of that. So that way, you can apply what you said you were gonna apply in next year's budget, and then you'll have your balance of, I think it was one twenty-five. Um so you need to do that second portion there to unencumber um that one oh nine. And the stuff underneath it is just really reference information, though. I can speak to that in a second.
I move we unencumber all non-lapsing funds allocated to the center school chimney project totaling a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
What's second one?
Any further discussion? Okay, um our favor, please say aye.
So you see that program balance of negative seven sixty-two is probably closer to eight hundred thousand after today. Um and so we were down, I thought, we were down to thirty-five thousand in the hole. We're we're closer now. You can add another um, you know, twenty-five thousand to that. Um we're still okay. It, the stuff in the yellow is, we're expecting that another excess cost payment in. The after-school grant is in the finalize, final stages of being approved at the state level, so we'll have some funding come back from that. Um the IDA part B is a new grant that just came out. Marcia wrote it. It's already in the works. We're getting it. We get a plan of the five thousand. Um it, I just hope I don't get another phone call tomorrow, to be honest with you. Now, the balance of this, what I'm doing now, and and when you go back to this document, and you look at what our total was, our balance was around one thirty-two. I'm going to cover the balance with the what's in the board event budget. What I'm trying to do is, I'll, I'll, I'm, I've got. My administrators are are ordering things as they need it now, um because the budget's open, but that fifty thousand dollars, it's in the hole. Um I believe, now that you've transferred the the funds, um this eighty thousand, if you look out of fringe. This is what's there now, so you still have seventy thousand in there, that if we can live with that and everything else stays the way it is. We've wiped out the deficit, which would be incredible. Um I again, I'm gonna say this because I've said it over and over, as of today, right, as of today. So that is the the adjustment on program three, uh and we have lots of avenues to to back it up. The other piece I want to speak to, even though, even though it's not special education related, is that I have met with Kristen and I, even with all of this. We can still do all the CKLA, ELA um program um to make sure I really have been budgeting very tight. To make sure that we can go pre-K eight with that, um and we can, so. We're using some money that normally we would have next year. It's tight, but we're gonna make sure that happens, so uh just in case people were wondering about that. Keep moving? Maintenance phone request. This is another avenue of how I say I get back to the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This is part of that piece. When we started looking at all of the repairs that we've done this year, um and I sent this to you, I think, uh or you had the attachment in this?
Yeah.
Um these are all the projects that have been done already, except for one. There's only one project in there that. Hasn't, has not been uh completed, then we would just be getting the money. Basically, the idea is. All of this money, except for, I think, three thousand dollars, if you approve this, if you request this, it goes to town meeting. You are Board of Finance tomorrow night, uh Board of Selectmen the next day, goes to town meeting with the regular vote. Or with the regular town meeting, if it's approved at town meeting, that money would be transferred out of the million dollars in CIP. Backed into your budget. Again, the, if it were four thousand dollars, I'd be like, hmm, we're doing okay. I'm gonna say, I think you need this buffer. It's enough money that I think you should do it. Um and it's, we've had a lot of projects in there, so um I wrote a um a sample motion there for you. Um and it's basically to to move, uh to ask them to call a town meeting for that twenty-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars. It moves to the capital reserve fund, and it goes to uh to that account. Donna's created the school repair account. Um and she did request that you say, just say it's coming out of a million dollars. Makes it very clear for everybody where that one is coming from.
Um the three thousand?
Yeah.
So is, that's not coming out of this?
It's, the three thousand is part of the twenty-seven. It's, the three thousand is part of the twenty-seven.
That's part of it.
So basically, you're gonna bring back twenty-four thousand into your, into the budget, but we still want the three thousand dollar project to happen. Cause it's another repair that would then come out of the budget if I didn't do it.
And that's very fair, that money, that million dollars has been set aside to repair the school reserve, yeah, so.
We pulled all of the bills. Um, I'm not pulling bills that are four hundred dollars for something or checks, these are full repairs, something had to be done. Uh, we had a brownout and something had to be repaired for fifteen hundred dollars. Those, that's, it's all of this.
Does that cover all the things you referred to from the brownout?
Everything that's in here is what, uh, makes sense for a repair, if it was a small amount, we didn't, we didn't do it.
Now, from the brownout, couldn't we, I don't know how we're insured as a district, are we self-insured?
No, we, we use KERMA, but our deductible, it's, yeah, and, and my concern is if we hit our insurance too much. Our, we're at a lock rate right now, let me tell you, we've used our insurance with floods. And next time we're out of that lock rate, I'm a little nervous about that. Uh, so I try not to do that again, just because the deductible and the funds are there, so.
Okay, would anyone like to re-post, y'all?
I will see if I can, okay. I move the board of education requests, the board of finance requests, the board of selectmen. Call a town meeting to appropriate twenty-seven thousand forty-nine dollars from the capital reserve fund to. Zero four, four, zero five oh, 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 one, school repair projects. These funds are to come out of the million dollars set aside for the school projects in CIP. Um, year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Are there any further questions? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Yes, we are all clear on that unanimously, yes, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to new business, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Um, regular meeting from March twelfth, special meeting from March fourteenth, a policy committed meeting from March twentieth, can we bundle those together? Is everyone fine with that?
Yes.
Yeah, if anyone would like to make that motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from March twelfth, March fourteenth, and March twentieth meetings.
What year?
Twenty twenty-four.
Did you win that one?
Uh, let me have a tie.
Okay, did anyone, um, I'm sure you have a chance to look it over, did anybody have anything they needed, uh, to change on it?
Yeah, uh, going forward on the board of education minutes, I noticed that, that I might have, this might be, have been happening, but I just noticed it on this set of minutes. Um, I noticed that Brianna's highlighted as the chair, Jenna highlighted as the vice chair, Sam is not highlighted as the secretary. I think we're gonna highlight, um, the positions, thank you, uh, we need to highlight them all. Hey, tell me, uh, members attended.
Alright, are you?
So we put secretary first in.
Oh, because it's not listed, it doesn't say secretary.
And it's only on the fourteenth?
Yes, I, it's on these, it's on our regular.
I'll make sure that's there.
Okay.
Good catch, thank you.
I just had a little thing, which is I only need one N in my first.
I catch that, we've heard that a thousand times when she sends it to us too.
I know, I am. Okay, um, alright, if there's no other edits, then we are ready to go ahead and approve that. So, all in favor of approving those three sets of minutes, please signify by saying aye. Anybody else? Great, alright, so we have approved all three of those unanimously as per. Nice job, okay, we are moving on to, um, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Wellington public school calendar adjustment. So, let's talk about June.
So, I'm gonna recommend that you adjust the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. Um, the number of school days, so we have a hundred and eighty-two student days. Uh, and I'm gonna suggest you bring it to a hundred and eighty-one. Um, that would make the last day of school for students Friday, June fourteenth. Um, instead of having them return for the Monday, which is the half-day of school, um. Turn that corner, I'm not so sure, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, making that adjustment also does something for us that's a little self-serving, which I already talked to the, to the, um. Union about, teachers' union, is that their contract number of days doesn't change. You could utilize that Monday as a full day for staff development on the new ELA program. We need the time, it would not be the only one, the, um. Person doing it would surely know that we're on the edge, at the end of school. Um, but everybody I talked to was like, is already gung-ho about it and would support that, so. I think that's, you know, a, a good use of time, um, and I would also propose that. You maintain the Friday as the last day of school, even if you have another weather-related event. Meaning, if you have another sno- snow day or wind day or flood day.
Or hot day.
Or eclipse day, or whatever it is, that you would just automatically bump a tool from a hundred eighty-one to a hundred and eighty. And that Friday would maintain the last day of school, if it goes, if we had a, a, a wild storm, a hurricane come through. It, we have to rethink that, we would wrap around the week, okay, we have to rethink it. Um, but right now graduation, we would like this, the promotion ceremony to be set for that Friday. Um, and not change it if there's another day, so just, so I was trying to make a head. This is what I, if this is clear.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the statement date for the?
A hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty.
It has to be a hundred and eighty days, that's why if we went, if we had a significant storm, you would have to change that Friday, it could no longer be that. If we went under that, but basically in this, you're allowing it without having to come back again, you're telling people. We're probably gonna be out on Friday, that's the, what this is saying, even if we had two more days out. Yeah.
So we counted a hundred and eighty-four of this?
No, it's one eighty-two. It's, the adjustment is.
Yeah, her original date for dismissed was like the eleventh.
Do you?
Oh, well.
So, do you have enough, um, early closing days for professional development for the new program?
We're building that as we go right now, Kristen and I literally just talked about it today, and Erin and I talked about it about a week ago. Um, we have a professional development committee that's looking, identifying all the needs. And basically what we have is we have a grid that's set up and it basically says full day professional development day, and here are all things that we can do. Half-days, team meetings, PLC time, but we've plugged things in to make sure everything's covered.
Okay.
Full-day PDs are hard to, hard to get because there's only so many full-day things. Um, it would be nice, I know this sounds bad, but people wanna take their stuff home for the summer and. Already have some background, be able to look at some things, they're not, we, we don't expect that they're going to, but some people wanna look at their stuff. And we can give it to them, we can do that professional development day that day, and then come back with a follow-up that's a half-day. And then they have more time at the beginning of the year to prep those units that they would be kicking off. As opposed to in the beginning of the year, you're having the full day and then going, okay, I have to turn this around in twenty-four hours, we don't wanna do that.
Do we, as a board, or are we only doing this motion to shorten the day and then you make the decision as superintendent? To have them come back as a PD?
Their contract is a hundred and eighty-eight days.
So that's, that's not even for us to decide, this is what we're deciding.
Correct, I mean, their contract is a contract, what you set in the school calendar is the number of days that you have students there. Um, what, what I wanted to make sure was that the union was not gonna have an issue with it, because it says they have a hundred and eighty-two days. Uh, it says the number of professional development days, they have a cleanup day, it's all set in. Um, basically what would happen is they'd have a PD day on Monday and Tuesday would be their cleanup day. And we're pretty lenient with people on our cleanup day, if they're done with their cleanup at eleven o'clock, they go home. We, we work, that's how you work with people, I don't hold people all day long, they're done, they're, all of their checkboxes are there, they turn in whatever they need to turn in. Paperwork is where it needs to be, I'm not gonna tell someone to sit there and stay long.
Then you have people like me who are there for two weeks.
There are people that come in for days.
What is the staff expectation for the afternoon of the fourth day? Or are they released at a half-day also?
No, they're not released at the half-day also, they, they all have records, and they usually do cross-grade share on that half-day, so. We have a picnic, we usually have a picnic lunch at both schools. Um, and then they take the time, eh, you know, trying to get everybody to talk about your next year's group of kids. We spend time with them talking about who's coming in.
After a long school year, do you think the staff are up for a full PD day?
I didn't hear any flag.
Okay.
Is it a lot? A hundred percent? Should we provide lunch? Absolutely. Um, could we consider doing a half-day as a kickoff? Sure. Um, but you still have them for a full day.
Yeah, we have to use the time that we can, I feel like it's so, feeling far between.
Yeah.
And this was a surprise.
Yeah, it is.
Program was not planned back when we even developed the calendar.
And trust me when I say, you know, when we bring in a trainer, whoever, um, we're gonna get from Ampli- Amplifier CKLA to come in. Our conversation is gonna be, realize this is their second-to-last day, you need to be dynamic, you need to give them breaks, it needs to be engaging. You need to give them time to process, you need to give some grace, you need to give them some chocolate, but, you know.
I was gonna say choice also, because some of your staff do want diving and get all the way into this as soon as possible. And there are others who are like, yeah, let me breathe or have sex, so I understand I need to like, look at this and start considering, but. I'm not ready for the full day, so if there's any way to give them, you know, like mini workshops or choice in it too, that would be great.
The, so they've already started using, uh, we've used some sub-time to do this and some of the half-day time. They're already meeting with Kristen on, and, and getting materials and seeing things and testing things out, so we have some people that are really hungry. Um, but again, this is, it's, let's start with someone, we get it, um, but again, time is really hard. Um, you know, Mansfield's calendar is really quirky this year, it would've worked out great for us in the situation. Like, they're coming back the week before we are, and doing a couple days of PD and then giving a long weekend. And then, then kids start back, so it's a little different. Um. I think your calendar is fine the way it is, but I do think you should make the adjustment to. But, I'm sorry, I think the half-day for students coming back on Monday just doesn't make sense.
I'll make the motion, cause I'll be the hero. I move the DOE adjusts the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar to make the last day of school for students Friday, June fourteen. Which will be an early dismissal, and if the district has one additional weather moving to closing before the end of the school year, that that last day of school will remain as Friday, June fourteen. Twenty twenty-four, and be a true dismissal.
Second.
Any other questions?
More of a statement, I just, I had no problem with this at all, I just wanted to make sure the staff were okay with doing a full PD day mentally. It's after a long school year, I, I get it, I see him at the end of the school year.
True. I, I, I hear you, but they're gonna have to be there anyway, so.
Right, they have to be there anyways, yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, they might as well, and they won't have kids to wrangle in the, in the most loving kind of way.
We'll have the materials to give them, so they can, okay, if they want to use them all by the seventh on that.
There is a monster order, right? Eighty-nine thousand dollars.
And that will be?
Round one.
Monday, the seventeenth, will be really?
Yes, correct, and Tuesdays.
We need to do, oops, sorry, do we need to do anything to make sure they're served lunch and all that, or?
Ice cream, ice cream, some taste.
We don't, they like. Yeah. We'll make sure that they have the food they want.
Well, then we can help support them somehow, Tuesday, so thank you for that. Okay, make the vote, oh, oh, sorry, yeah, we got four, John. Okay, um, so we have, maybe like the minutes previously stated, thank you, Jen, and John for seconding. And we are ready to approve that, so everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, graduation students, you have Friday half-day, and then graduation, you said.
Yep, we'll set that, so that way the people can put it out, and it was gonna kinda be hard to have that on Monday if it was a half-day, so.
Well, you know, this is, I was already getting protests that she wasn't going to school, I'm like, if there's a school year, no. Um, next, we're looking, oh, this is, I love this one. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five healthy food certification, it should be in your, yeah, email, and it's very specific.
Yeah, so this is, this, this is completed each year and, and I'm requesting that you approve both of these motions that you have in front of you. Um, yes, the motion has to be read exactly as it's written, because we had to submit proof that it's done exactly. As it's done there, I, I think it's a little silly because it talks about like meal times and school stores and vending machines, but you literally have to read what's there. Uh, and then you could vote on that, and same thing with the second one. You have to do this because you're part of the national school lunch program and you get money back from the government, so you need to follow certain rules. That's part of this, the second part of this, um, and that second motion really allows you, uh, some exemptions. To not follow this in certain scenarios, so if you sell snacks after school at a dance. If you have the exemption, you don't have to meet the, 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 the same level of things. Um, so in the past, we've done three motions, this year they actually allowed you to blend the two together, the, the snacks and the, the drinks. So the second motion is the snacks and drinks, um, the food and beverage exemptions. That's again outside of the school day, and it's, it's very specific about what that means, uh, and so I would welcome you to.
Alright, Brianna, so, you know what?
Yeah, sure, go for it.
Um, I have to say aye with a million.
Yes, perfect.
I move that pursuant to CGS section ten dash two fifteen F, the Wellington Board of Education. Certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction. And not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times. And from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias. Culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school upper. Um, organizations and groups.
Second.
Thanks, John.
Okay, um, did anyone have any questions about that, very simple?
Phil, are we getting the food presentation this year, from me, I know you got it last year.
What are you referring to?
So, so, um, Stephanie, I gave them the meals and things like that. Uh, yeah, I think she gave a presentation for last year, I remember, um, just kinda highlighting. What they do in capture search, we were getting that again this year.
We can, I mean, I can have her do a quick update.
I didn't know it was a yearly thing or what I was like, you know.
No, but it might not be a bad thing because she's, some of the things that are new and wants changing and, um, she's got a new food services program. I don't think it would be a bad thing to do a, you know, a ten-minute, and I think she'd welcome it because she, she promotes her food program constantly.
I love it.
If you looked at the name of the menu items yesterday, I mean. Very funny. I can, I can, I can do that.
I'm thinking as we have so many townspeople looking at our budgetary numbers. The more they hear from our students, the more they understand what our staff's going through, the more they.
Yeah.
Get a handle on those programs, um, the better, for sure.
Yeah, number, number of meals, free, you know, free and reduced, what are they offering? What's their program look like, you know, on, on a daily basis? Is breakfast free next year, what are lunch prices, like all those things are, are good information, so.
Okay, um, it sounds like we're ready to vote, so if you are in favor of this particular motion as read by Mr.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I mean, I, I did.
Oh, our agenda, sorry.
Don't worry, we're ready to go, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Don't worry, we're ready to go. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so we have unanimously passed that motion. Now.
So, if you, yes, so if you want to do the exemption, uh, portion is there. And I do suggest you do the exemption, otherwise everything's after school. You're stuck meeting that very high level.
Especially for the P T A.
Good.
There's a lot of, uh, behind things, usually.
Yep.
I'll leave this one, it's behind you too.
Okay.
All right, so I move that the Wellington Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items. That do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in section ten dash. Two twenty-one Q of the Connecticut General Statute, provided that the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day. Or on the weekend. Number two, the sale is in the location of the event, and number three. The food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games will play, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals. And debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before. To thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Why midnight?
Uh, this is straight from them.
Okay, let me do this. Um, if you are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, let's go ahead and ask that unanimously, yes. And we can look forward to doing that again. Okay, um, next, we're gonna talk about policy number five one one two A, which is our ages of attendance due to the recent changes to inflation about. That's page fifteen.
Yep, so the policy, uh, committee reviewed the ages of attendance policy, um. The changes in here, and it just came out strange, sorry, it, just the way it's shown, but. Wanted to show you what it looked like, 'cause I don't know if in your copy it showed this way, but basically, all it's doing is changing January. To September, which is the new law, okay? Um, and then, um, it's adding in who reside in the town of Wellington. Um, and then the attorney, uh, was on vacation, she's back, so she's gonna be reviewing. The whole policy, and then all of the legal section at the bottom, the references and the form, to make sure everything's good. Um, this is your first read, I hope this group, new group has approved the policy since, have you? So, um, you know, this is not for approval tonight, this is just your first review, chance to ask questions. It's a very easy policy, to be honest with you. Uh, you have to follow the law, even if you wrote something different in there, it wouldn't matter, because the law would trump your policy. So, um, basically what will happen is, uh, after the attorney, uh, goes through and makes the recommendation, I'll share that with you. And then your second reading, you could make the determination to approve the policy. Questions about what's there, or people that, or our own policy committee, do you have thoughts?
Um. Start the board off with an easy one, 'cause there's not that much to do. Other policies that we, we were gonna have some kind of discussion, I anticipate.
Yeah.
Um, this one's pretty easy, but I just wanted to point out that everybody on the board, and I may be. Even regardless, some people are on the board today, some people are watching too, um, people wondered where I got the statute that allowed for the reimbursement amount. Uh, for special education. The easiest way to find stuff like that is you go down to the bottom of these policies. And all the legal references are referenced at the bottom, and you can just search, like, a general statute, and then this number, it gives you the entire, uh, statute. Uh, related to it. So, on some things, it's easy. And, but on some things, there's a lot of legalese where it goes back to other ones, but I mean, for the most part, if you have any questions about why we have to do things a certain way. Look at our policies and go to the legal reference, you can see what the state says. You can try not to see if there's any kind of wiggle room or anything there, 'cause a lot of times, there's not, so. That's the book, what you got.
Yeah, and a lot of times, there's overlap too, so it's, you're pulling, that's why it's here, is you pull from. A, a variety of policies that all apply. Good.
Okay, so you anticipate that, um, when do you think our term will be?
I think you'll have this done for, you, for voted in May. I don't think this is gonna be an issue.
In your proceeding with screenings as such?
Correct, yes.
We still have to move to receive though?
I don't think so. I've never done that.
Boy, it's always on the consent agenda for you, that's why I was asking. All, all our, all our first reads are on consent agenda, so I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need to, I think it's only when it's.
I'm gonna go.
It's no action, yeah, it's no action, or you live.
Okay, do we have anything to attend to for all the business?
I left it out there in case you add something.
Yeah, we have enough new exciting things going on. Okay, item twelve is present to speak, so we're gonna cut this back out to the. Zoom land and see if anybody there wanted to share. I know, you were super thorough. Thank you all for attending. Um, next, we have board comment. I just wanted to thank Alex Stevenfield for. Wearing their bunny ears to the school, to mean up the blood that day. Sorry, again, that you had to do that. What's the next holiday where we should like, hammer later, shred? Okay.
I heard something along that.
We'll be close back. Yeah, you do. You just don't know what it is yet.
Yeah.
Let's hope that's not. Um, and then I just wanted to give a wonderful shout-out to the folks organizing Evening in the Arts. It really was wonderful to be in that space with all those different. Children and look at the art, it was nice. The students' personalities shown through visually. Music auditorily, um, and in their. Self-expression, of course, I'm thinking of the, um, gentleman who did a solo with the jazz band, and really got us all feeling good. So to speak. Um, again, you know, those events are open to anyone in public, in the public, right? So, even if you don't have students at those schools, and you know that these things are going on, and you have a little bit of time in an evening, step by. Because they will just blow you away with their, their confidence, um, their camaraderie. Their skills and abilities, it's just totally awesome, so. It was a lot to be proud of that name. Does anybody else have anything to wrap up?
I just second that emotion. I think that was, um, an amazing show of talent, and for kids to be unafraid to stand up there and just do the stuff that they did is amazing. And hats way off to teachers, um, and of course, everybody, art, it was incredible. Um, and we are still singing, we're giving wraps in. That's, that's our last effect. Um. And, and of your excitement, for sure, so sharing that with everybody.
Looking forward to the center shows coming up. Um, I would like to, um, thank, now, Michelle. It's coming, so Michelle White is a new hire.
Yes.
So, welcome to Michelle. And. And good luck to Hallie as she works toward her masters, and thank you for your time in Wellington.
Did anybody else?
Yeah, um. So. Being on this side of the table for a budget discussion was an eye-opening experience. I don't think it's a secret here that I'm not going to be having coffee and catching up on the family with some people on this board. We have some great differences, lots, is how it is, but the reason I bring that up is because. I watched some very contentious meetings. I watched some board members or committee members undercut each other. Um, when speaking to the board of finance. And I think that's something that needs to be commended for us, is we never did that despite our differences. Um, we had a lot of discussion. But it was always productive. I never, I never felt it was disrespectful to anybody. Um, and when it came down to asking what we needed to ask for, we were all on the same page. Anybody who spoke. Spoke the same way. Nobody tried to take anything away, or mention anything that is not necessary, or they didn't feel was necessary, or anything like that. It was, it was a kind of a testament to working together despite differences, and I think that just needed to be called out to everybody. Uh, so, I think we did a, we did a pretty good job, especially considering the. Pretty dire circumstances of our, of our percentage, um, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Gold star, I'm proud of you.
Can I ask you just a, a, a procedural question? This is. I think F O Y now, uh, I probably have to release the documents that are sitting on the table, because you have them. I just wanna make sure, and it kinda goes along the same lines, um, I'm gonna put these on the website. I'm not gonna deal with F O Y requests, like, let's just be all transparent about what they're gonna do. I'm gonna put them out there, it'll clearly say draft, draft, draft. Um, but I think that along the same lines and conversations. Let people know it's a draft, there's gonna be more conversation about it, and we don't know how, you know, I don't think you know at this point what, what you're moving forward with. It was just a, uh, the first kind of picture, um, and so I think that's important to do, so as long as you know that, and you're okay with that. Um, I prefer not to deal with F O Y requests and wait for that and charge for copies, and let's just. Put it on the website tomorrow morning, and say if you wanna see what's there in the first round, 'cause I know there's people that wanna see it.
They knew it was coming.
Yeah, 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 and you hadn't seen it until you walked in, so.
Transparency is really important.
It is, it is.
And we can use all the help we've, and, and what we can get, so hopefully people have some, um, helpful comments. Okay, I believe we are ready to adjourn. Did anyone like to make that motion?
I move that we adjourn on the week.
Second.
Okay, um, assume we don't have to discuss that, uh, all in favor of adjourning at eight twenty-nine?